And for the Pudge of Legions.
Pudge of Legions to the United States of America. Is Republicans. Nation.
I want to welcome everyone to the lower going to town to quarter supervisor, regular public meeting for Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The board of supervisors met an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel matters and litigation. Also want to advise everyone that this meeting is being recorded, streamed to be a zoom. First up is public comment. Citizens can comment on any agenda items that are any items that are not on the agenda and that won't be discussed by the board. Anyone online? Being none. Onto building and zoning. First up, we have the approval of a decision. An order for the Wisconsin School District Conditional Use Application for a what land encroachment to construct a turf field. Last. Meeting, I believe it was November twenty-second, we actually had the conditional use hearing. The applicant is coming before us. Ask for a decision. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, we have before us resolution twenty-two, twenty-nine. The background is it was included it within our managers report and is. On the screen in front of us. Is there a motion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up, we have, I'm sorry, that's not resolution twenty-two, twenty-nine. That is the approval of the decision of the conditional use application. My apologies. Next up is the resolution twenty-two, twenty-nine, the preliminary and final approval of the Wisconsin School District Land Development Plan to construct the turf field. Again, that background is in front of us was included in our managers report. Are there any questions from? Being none, are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-two, twenty-nine preliminary and final approval of the Wisconsin School District Land Development Plan to construct a turf field. Is there a second? All those in favor? Hi. Motion carries. Yes, is that correct? Admissal for the minutes? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yes. And thank you to the applicant. Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation of preliminary final two lot subdivision for fifteen oh one Cedar Hill Road. Information around this was included in our manager's report. Applicant is in front of us. If you could just tell us your name. I'm sorry, I don't think the microphone is on. Oh, it's not on. You just say your name again, I'm sorry.
Okay, my name is Robert Jordan with Woodrow Associates. Here tonight on behalf of Robert and Cheryl Mathramon over fifteen oh one Cedar Hill Road. The application for you is a two lot subdivision. Very similar to the lot to the south, we are proposing a flag lot that would be take take access up a Cedar Hill Road via twenty-five foot access strip. This plan has been before the zoning hearing board, as pointed out in Gilmore's review letter dated August twenty-ninth, to receive a zoning variance to permit a side yard setback of forty-two point six feet. For lot one, which is the covered porch area. And also a second variance for the length of the flag strip to three seventy-one oh one in lieu of three hundred foot required. In response to Gilmore's review letter, there were a few waivers that were seeking this evening. And would like to go over those with you. Okay? A waiver to first off waiver one. From section twelve thirty point one four, we're removing. As it's not necessary, as pointed out in Gilmore's review. We be seeking a waiver to allow an aerial image in lieu of the two hundred foot requirements, so it'd be a partial waiver. In addition to that waiver, we're also asking. Well, actually, seeking direction from council or from the supervisors as to what would be required in terms of road improvements for Cedar Hill Road. Originally, originally, we had asked for defer. My understanding is that we'd be okay with providing a thirteen foot wide widening consistent with township ordinance if the board so chooses.
Can you tell me what's, I'm just sorry to interrupt, what section are you referring to? Is that the, are you talking about the twelve thirty fifty-eight? Thirty-seven?
Point three seven C and D.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty-six foot well cartway where we'd be frozen thirteen feet heck with widening, so it'd be about a two foot widening on our side of the way.
And the neighboring parcel was that wide?
The neighboring parcel to the south is actually wider. That was widened back some time ago with that subdivision as an extension of deceleration lane for the adjoining subdivision. We don't believe that those improvements would need to be carried out far north and certainly defer to the township engineer and the board as well as McMahon.
That's an accurate statement that the ordinance requires a twenty-six foot wide cartway, which would be a thirteen foot half width on their side of the road. Later on this evening, you're going to hear an application directly across the street for which a thirteen foot half width is also proposed, giving the total twenty-six feet along this section of Cedar Hill Road.
So between both applicants, we get to the twenty-six foot cartway that's required?
That's correct.
Correct.
So your deferral or your waiver request contingent on us putting those.
It's contingent upon the board's direction requiring the wide. They most certainly like a waiver, given the fact that it's minor subdivision, but the board seems fit to to do that. We would go ahead and add that thirteen.
I would be my recommendation, and I think chat agrees that the thirteen feet be provided across the front edge of this property. And then when the widening happens across the street, now you've got the prescribed twenty-six feet wide. So Bob, are you?
We have no objections.
Okay, so essentially he's going to remove the request for the for the waiver from the widening. Now you're on to talk about curbing and sidewalk.
Okay.
The next referral was the the request to provide street trees along Cedar Hill Road. Basically, we're asking for a waiver of this. There are an existing number of trees along the front of the Cedar Hill Road, which are well beyond the planting criteria of a street tree. We're asking that they be be placed in lieu of or accepted in lieu of new street trees or additional street trees. I think across the frontage, it would be every forty feet. Six trees. And there are sufficient trees along the frontage of.
The frontage is two hundred feet and that would at a forty foot interval require five trees. There are five trees that exist there. They just aren't spaced out. Yes, they're clustered rather than spaced.
The next waiver we're requesting is the pedestrian trail or sidewalk. Along both sides of the street. As Jim mentioned, we you'll be seeing another application. After this, where there is an escrow path proposed along the entire frontage of the property on the opposite side, there are no sidewalks or cartways or cart paths along this side. So we'd be requesting a waiver for sidewalk improvements. Defer on number four, section twelve thirty point five eight talks about the the board to consider street lighting. There are no streetlights currently on Cedar Hill Road. However, we do have lampposts associated with the existing drive-in. We'll do so for lot two. And the last waiver was was a defer of the residential impact fee for recreation, which were removed that waiver as well. That pretty much concludes the waiver request associated with the application. Be happy to answer any questions that the township might have, the board might have regarding the application. All other comments and Gilmore's review letter will comply items. We have no objections to comply. So we're here tonight seeking a preliminary final recommendation or approval.
This is just the presentation, so we have to instruct our solicitor one way or the other.
What's that?
We would, this is just a presentation. We would need to instruct our solicitor one way or another to to draft a resolution. Are there any questions from the board?
I just want to make sure I understood. Did you say you're removing the waiver for the residential impact fee?
Yes.
Request you're removed. Okay.
And there was a request for a waiver from providing curbing along the frontage of the property. That was in there, right? Okay, just making sure the board understands and.
Yeah.
There's no curbing in Cedar Hill now.
There is curbing south of this property. In the in the section that we just talked about as being widened much further than what the ordinance requires.
And then what about the trails?
There's, there is no sidewalk on this side of Cedar Hill Road, south of this property until you get to the Peterman. The Peterman Road, it comes out of that subdivision and it just kind of terminates right there.
Any?
And there, so one more thing to add is that the subdivision that happened a few like probably seven, eight years ago now, just south of this, there was proposed sidewalk along there and the board ended up taking a fee in lieu of that sidewalk rather than having it installed. So it doesn't exist and there's right of way to put it in, but it it won't be put in by the developer anymore.
And is there any bar deserve trail system connect anywhere around there?
No, not really. But I think, is there a crosswalk across Cedar Hill at Peterman? So the crosswalk across Cedar Hill at Peterman, and then there's a trail, it's like a limestone trail all the way up through Redstone Lane Development that terminates at the property that he's, we're going to talk about next, the next subdivision property on the opposite side of the street.
And that trail will continue to cross the entire frontage of those lots.
Are any additional questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? That conclude your presentation?
Yes.
We have before us the opportunity to instruct our solicitor. Draft a resolution related to the final two two lot subdivision at fifteen oh one Cedar Hill Road. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
We just had some minor comments and and Jim and I concur on on the waivers that were were discussed. Yeah.
No worries. We have before us a motion. Is there a second? All those in favor? Hi. Motion carries. So we're going to instruct our solicitor to draft a resolution related to a preliminary final. For fifteen oh one Cedar Hill Road. Next up is the presentation of preliminary final seven lot subdivision fifteen hundred to fifteen twenty-four Cedar Hill Road.
Good evening. I know this is much better than the last one, so we're going to better. If you want to open up the where they where they were. Yes, that one. Okay, so please recall, again, my name is Robert Jordan with Woodrow. I am here on behalf of Cedar Hill Road Development Group. Please recall that this plan was before you, probably a year and a half ago, as a conditional use application. Where it was granted conditional use. We worked with the neighbors. Regarding some of the stormwater concerns that they had, as well as some of the access points. And in turn, what we decided to do was to eliminate this plan from twelve lots and take it down to a seven lot subdivision, a biore plant, which I'll show you is the next one. So this is the surrounding area that will show the seven lots and how some of the stormwater concerns from the subdivision to the south. All that water from Cedar Hill Road comes down through and gets to the back of those lots. So what we, in working with the owners of those lots, we decided to go with the seven lot concept and eliminate the cul-de-sacs that we had shown, decreasing the amount of impervious surface associated with the development. Also improving the circulation and eliminating the cul-de-sacs out the Cedar Hill Road. So we have seven individual access points in lieu of the three that we had. There was a lot of concerns at the conditional use hearings with regards to traffic as well as stormwater management. So this plan is a product of the meetings with the residential neighbors that we we had, and we showed seven lots with a fifty foot wide open space area to the rear of the property. It notes that we we put this open space to the back of the property simply to preserve the existing vegetation along the back of the property. That was a big concern to the neighbors. And you're seeing on the landscape lines that we did enhance that quite a bit to meet current township ordinance requirements. We are proposing a thirteen foot wide widening on Cedar Hill Road with this application and also the six foot wide paved trail across the entire frontage that would link with the Peterman subdivision across the street or adjacent to us. And that's pretty much the presentation with regards to the layout of the plan. We have seven individual rain gardens that will be constructed that will handle up to ten thousand square feet of impervious surface for each of the lots. And that goes to address a lot of the neighbors' concerns. Please note, as in raising Gilmore's review letter, lot four of the plan does have an existing structure that we're looking to maintain. That structure will require zoning relief to fit within setbacks that we have shown on the plan. We don't meet the minimum setback side yard requirements. We could most certainly manipulate the lot line, but we felt that keeping the lines perpendicular to Cedar Hill Road just makes a cleaner presentation and application. So we would be seeking zoning relief for that should the board find unacceptable.
How far you can do set back?
It's only a few feet. I don't. We're at forty-one point five three feet where forty-five is required. With this application, we're also seeking a few waivers that are pertinent to to the application. Well, as pointed out in Gilmore's review letter. We be a partial waivers required for the tree planting. We we went back and forth with the planning commission. Originally, our original application showed a large deficiency of a hundred and five trees. At the planning commission, our first attempt felt that that was inadequate and that we needed to go back to the drawing board. We did that, working with the R person, working with Gilmore and Associates, we came up with a partial waiver. And the partial waiver that we're requesting is to allow two evergreen trees to account for one shade tree and two ornamental trees to account for one shade tree. And the remaining of the trees that are required would be upsizing caliber inches to meet the ordinance requirement. So we just feel that there's a partial waiver that's required to meet that, and I think Jim can support that, right?
Yeah, it's an, it's an accurate statement. I believe that they should still request a partial waiver because we're accepting the equivalence two evergreen trees for one shade tree and two ornamental trees for one shade tree, where the ordinance is pretty strict in that the replacements are to be shade trees. So you're getting more trees, you're just getting less shade trees.
Is there a reason why you're you're reducing the number of shade trees?
Due just to the planting restrictions and growth potential of the trees that we have shown. As you can see, we're honoring the existing buffer to the south. We're enhancing that. I I just think that, you know, it would definitely be very dense.
They can plant the evergreen trees closer together because they grow together, whereas the shade trees need to be spaced out more because the canopies get quite large over time.
Thank you.
So if we here's, what are you short, even if you do this?
But we're not sure of any caliber inches right now. We're short a number of trees. I don't recall what that number is off the top of my head. Our landscape architect didn't.
No, but so if we accept the equivalent, we accept if we accept the equivalence and the upsizing of the landscape stock, they're not short at all. There's.
To the waivers just because of the type of tree?
Yes, exactly.
It's the type of tree and then your caliber inch equivalent.
Correct.
It it meets the seventy-five percent native requirement.
Yes. To be honest, the landscape architecture did this, and I'm not really well versed in future use. But I believe that there is on the plan a tabulation. The next landscape plan has a tabulation of all the trees that are being proposed. And they will meet the seventy-five percent native requirements.
River birch. Eastern red bud. Saucer magnolia, sweet bay magnolia. Any of those ring a bell to you? There's one on here, I'm going to bet it's not native, and that's a Chinese dogwood. But there's only eight, like, they have to make up seventy-five percent as the natives. So like, for a lot of those ones I read off are in there in quantities of like fourteen, ten, eleven, and then the the non-natives are in there in like six and eight quantities. So it's how they get to the seventy-five percent native.
Is it? I guess what I'd like to avoid is like two shrubs.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we put our foot down on the shrub equivalents and there's the, none of that, there would certainly be shrubs planted on this property, but none of them will count towards your replacement requirement. Yes.
Well, they will be obviously water tolerant plants. We have a separate detail for each of the rain gardens that have certain plugs and they're specifically designed with rain garden intent. I I don't know.
Sure.
It's on the revise.
Yeah, the, a lot of the there's, there's trees and shrubs within the rain gardens themselves, so it wouldn't really be possible to just straight mow those areas because there's some of the more wet tolerant trees are planted within the rain gardens.
And you see those rain gardens would be restricted and have owner and maintenance obligations associated with.
You can, you can kind of see on the plan up there. There's a like the one that's right there on lot five, I guess. There's, there's a couple of larger trees, there's some flowering trees, and then there's all those little dots are the, those are shrubs.
So it'd be a good mix between shrubs, trees and plugs for the rain gardens.
Bob, who owns and maintains the open space?
We're proposing that the individual homeowners will maintain the open space. It would be de-restricted. They're also have the obligation, like I said, to to maintain the rain gardens.
So each lot owner owns their own portion of the open space.
Correct.
And maintains it.
Correct. So there'd be no obligation to the township.
No need for an association.
Technically, no, but I mean, if the board felt that we should have one just to main to ensure maintenance of the open space and maintenance of the rain gardens, we'd be happy to do.
Well, the trail too.
Trails.
And what is the mechanism? Ensure that caliber inches that are planted are.
So this, this, this plan gets tied to an escrow tabulation. In that escrow tabulation, the size of every tree is is denoted, and then when they plant that tree, someone from my office will go out and we we count all the trees to make sure that they're planted in the right locations, the species is correct and the size is correct. And unless those three things are satisfied, then they don't get their escrow back. So they're posting escrow to secure all the improvements, including the landscaping. That's the mechanism.
I think I'd be more comfortable with an association than their financial moves that hasn't sold the property.
I don't think we'd have an objection.
Just a point of clarification, and I I think this might be my interpretation of one of the reasons why smaller caliber inches trees were initially planted is that, I guess, there's a risk that they might not flourish if there's a larger caliber inch planted. So I guess my question is, larger tree, larger caliber inch trees planted, if it doesn't succeed, if it doesn't flourish, there's no timeframe where that would need to be replaced or just, this doesn't, didn't make it.
So generally speaking, the improvements, landscaping improvements would be considered, and Neil, you can correct me, but quasi-public improvements that would be escrowed, and then in the development agreement, it would say that there's a maintenance period for eighteen months after we accept them. So they have to survive and flourish for at least eighteen months. If they die within that period, then they replace them. And, you know, you're getting two trees for one, essentially.
Okay.
Oh, we have sufficient shade trees of that.
So I think the, all the street trees are shade trees, and those were some of the ones that they had upsized the stock. So the, I think, five inch instead of the required three inch on all the street trees and I can check the species, but they should be the shade trees. Could you?
There are, there are, on this, I mean, I can see it, because there are oak and stuff listed on the planning schedule.
It's hard to read, but it's in that certain link, they list the number and the amount. Oak is listed. It's hard to read, but it's in that certain link. They list the number and the amount oak is listed.
Yeah, I'm reading that.
I think like Jim said, we are sizing majority larger caliber trees and the oaks and stuff like that that are shade trees to uh to supplement that count. So I think you're going to get a good balance uh of both some nice shade trees as well as some buffer entries from the adjoining neighbors. I think in the end, it's it's gonna be a real good product. And our landscape architect, she did meet with the planning commission. She did review it in detail with them, and they were most certainly comfortable with the decision and the planning that we had. Yeah, back to the waivers. The next waiver is section twelve thirty point four five A waiver required sidewalks on both sides of the existing and proposed streets. As mentioned, we are proposing a six foot wide paved trail that would connect with the adjoining subdivision divisions of limestone trail and continue that across the entire frontage of the property terminating at the eastern end. The next waiver that we're be requesting is section twelve thirty point six zero B. Uh, the the requirement to construct concrete driveway aprons because we are not proposing any sidewalk or curving along Cedar Hill Road, we'd uh we'd ask for a waiver of that. Uh, next waiver would be section twelve thirty point six one A, a waiver from providing curb along a proposed street. As Jim points out, there is curving uh on the opposite side of the street uh adjacent to the parcel that we just reviewed. That was done as an extension of for deceleration lane purposes into the uh adjoining subdivision. We're not proposing any curb on on across the frontage of this property simply because there are some drainage issues and some drainage concerns. The road is very flat across the entire frontage. So what we're doing in lower curb is we're providing some swales off the side of the road to bring that water on site, get it to our storm sewer collection system and then let's send into the rain gardens for for detention. So putting curb there would certainly force a lot more road construction, a lot more cut and fill of Cedar Hill Road, which not only impacts our side of the road, but also would impact the adjoining side of the road and cause potentially more drainage issues. So we're asking for a waiver of that. The next waiver is section twelve forty one point four zero one N. It's just a waiver to use storm piping less than eighteen inches in diameter. Some of our rain gardens are smaller discharges. We have twelve inch pipe proposed in some areas and some fifteen point fifteen inch storm sewer collection within the right of way. And that pretty much concludes the waiver and my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Will the smaller pipe size accommodate the anticipated water flow?
Yes, all our pipe sizes regardless of the size that we have shown have been designed for the hundred year storm event. So it will most certainly carry the flows to the rain gardens as we have in design. There's an to to the adjacent, the adjacent subdivision to the west does have a limestone trail that comes through the woods terminates about our property line. We picked that up with a paved trail across the entire frontage meandering through the properties and out to the corner of our property.
What is the long range? In other words, are are we not bound to have sidewalks in new subdivisions?
I think generally in new subdivisions, especially ones of this scale where there's an opportunity to get a lot of continuous sidewalk and pedestrian of pathways and to connect to an existing trail just off the property that it makes a ton of sense to to put in the the trail. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I understand the question. I mean, to me, in this instance, it's a tr- trail or a sidewalk. I don't know that you would you would really put both i- in parallel along this along the stretch of the street. And I think it made sense to go with a trail in this instance because we're connecting to a trail. If that we were connecting to a sidewalk, then I would say we extend the sidewalk. Uh, well, the ordinance says sidewalks, so that's why he's asking for a partial waiver to provide the trail in lieu of the sidewalk.
Yeah, definitely think that if it's really conventional subdivision, you would have curb and sidewalk, but because this isn't a a subdivision along an established roadway. Uh, you know, a trail makes some good sense in in this case. And I also think that, you know, it gives you some flexibility to add some contour to it, help pick up some of that storm order that we were talking about. And I think with sidewalk, you'd be locked to a more traditional uh widening. And I I I think in this case, given Cedar Hill Road being fully developed, that this is probably the best bet.
Fred brought up a good point about winter maintenance of of the trail. If it was sidewalk, the homeowners would be required to shovel it is you okay with uh the HOA being responsible for for clearing that trail in the winter?
We can add that to the
Thanks.
We had a um resident stop by who had a question about this. She questioned the street lights. If there's any proposed along Cedar Hills, she lives across the street from where these lots are going in. And I knew uh Jim, you had you had mentioned that there wasn't there wasn't a waiver and there wasn't anything depicted on the plan in way of streetlights.
We are not proposing any streetlights. We would be doing the traditional lampposts at the driveway.
Okay.
Unless the board felt that the streetlight was necessary.
It's your recommendation.
I don't think that street, there's no streetlights along any other portion of Cedar Hill Road. So I I don't really think they're warranted. The way the ordinance is written, it's at the discretion of the board. So I think in an abundance of caution, a lot of people ask for waivers just to make sure that you guys have given your opinion on it.
Yeah.
I assume the resident did not want streetlights. Yeah.
Yeah, I I there's no streetlights on Cedar Hills. I didn't think. Okay. Are there any additional questions from the board?
I have one question. Um, Jim, in your review letter, you said that there's grading required off the property on a neighbor's property.
So I had a discussion with Bob today about that, and he can revise the plan to remove that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You good? Any additional questions? Are there any questions from the public? None. And thank you for your presentation. I know that you have to go in front of the zoning hearing board.
Yes.
So we'll wait until that process is completed before any next step. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Next up, we have um the approval of settlement terms for five forty five North Bethlehem Pike LLC. Then I'm gonna turn it over to our solicitor.
Yes, this was a zoning issue uh that the township ran into with the property of five forty five at North Bethlehem Pike. It resulted in a citation being issued. Uh, no hearing was held before the district justice because we were able to reach uh a settlement and accommodation with the owner of that property. The terms uh proposed for settlement of the dispute uh are acceptable to me from a legal standpoint, and I believe the board has seen the terms of that proposed settlement.
With that, are there any questions from the board? Um, I'd like to make a motion to I guess, are we adopting this settlement?
Approving the terms of the
Approving the terms of the settlement uh for five forty five North Bethlehem Pike LLC. Is there a second? Second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
I'd like to thank Supervisor Torski. You work pretty hard with me on this settlement arrangement.
As does the board. Next step, I wanna um that we have authorization to advertise, but I would like to table this motion until our I would like to table this authorization to advertise till our next meeting. I think a a number of supervisors had some questions and concerns that they wanted to discuss with our solicitor potentially um ensure that the language is adequately adequately reflecting the goals of this actual amendment. So I'm put forth that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Bye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Um, next up, we have appointment to our comprehensive planning as a comprehensive plan steering committee. Uh, the list of those individuals was included in the manager's report. But the recommendation and that action is to appoint the steering committee of um myself, Mike Torski, representing the Board of Supervisors, uh Craig Malagrano, representing the Planning Commission, Rich Valega, representing the Planning Commission, Neil Trueblood, who's a realtor, Greg Harth, a developer and business owner, John Burns, who is a resident, uh Robert Rosenthal, who's from the zoning hearing board, Kathy Morris from Parker Rec Board, and Charlotte McKees, who's from Gwinnett Mercy University Board of Directors. I'd like to make a motion to approve those individuals selected and identified for our steering committee. Is there a is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the appointment to transportation impact fee and that advisory committee. Those individuals include Steve Peseon from the Planning Commission, Tim Woodward, um an engineer, David Goldstein, a resident and developer, Ken Amy, a resident and planner, Rusty Beardsley from the Planning Commission, Maureen Nun from the Planning Commission, and the um EAC, Matt Sequel, a business owner and developer. Um, there's special and specific requirements as it relates to the number of of members and the background um and industry through which they do business. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the appointment to the transportation impact fee. Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Um. Next up is a discussion of options for attempting to approve our cell phone service. As many people are aware that we do have significant gaps of coverage within our township. I think a few members of our board live within those gaps and and we've been made aware through uh community members and participation just as a as recent as our last board supervisor meeting that there are a significant deficits as far as um access to the cell phone service. So we have identified three areas that we could explore, and I don't know, does our Mimi, would you feel comfortable kind of going over it, or do you want me to? Jamie? Well, first, just the 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 three things that we have we have explored and we have come up with just
I can do that.
Okay.
So um and and Jamie and I have been working on this from some different directions. So I know earlier this year there was a company that came before the board that made a a presentation um about using social media essentially to try to get more information about dead zones or areas where there's inadequate service. Um, so that that's one option to explore, although that doesn't sound like the most viable option. It doesn't seem like it's really that business is going anywhere. So then there's also um in the last couple of weeks, the Federal Communications Commission has released a broadband map. Now, it's broadband. It's not just cellular, but it's fixed and mobile broadband, um internet broadband where they've gathered information from the providers to show where service is available, not necessarily in effect, but where it's available and what they're asking for is public comment essentially challenges to that map to make it more accurate to, you know, for individuals or businesses to be challenging where the horizons of the world are saying service is available. And and residents can do that. It's not the simplest process in the world, and it it I don't think it it doesn't seem like it's really addressing the issue here so much. So mapping doesn't seem to be to going too much. Um. There's also then zoning where cell towers are permitted. Your zoning ordinance regulates where towers are permitted, and it's a pretty limited area. There's only two relatively small areas in an overlay district where cell towers and and similar infrastructure would be permitted. There is a um a state law that was passed last year to address small wireless facilities. And that is something actually that the township should look into. The the statute said that um it was mandatory to update zoning ordinances to be compliant with that state law. One advantage of it is if there was this smaller wireless technology that are infrastructure that is installed in a township right of way, the township can charge fees for the use of the right of way where you you don't you can't charge PICO to have a a pole. Um, you could charge a carrier that had these, you know, something that looks like a street light, but it's really an antenna. So that may be something to look into regardless of what direction you go here. And then I think um the area where we definitely would like some more feedback from the board is whether you want to consider any township properties as potential sites for cell tower or other infrastructure. Um, not looking for any kind of commitment from the township, but are there properties that you would essentially want shopped around to see if there are carriers that would be um interested in talking to the township about where this where infrastructure could go. And that's where Jamie did a lot of work in figuring out which properties at least don't have deed restriction are truly open for discussion, although the zoning still could be an issue for these properties too.
But Jamie, you kind of given us a map in our manager's report that kind of went over those properties and identified them. Do you want to speak to?
Um, yeah, basically, the the map, the original map had identified about thirty parcels that um were potential um were owned by the township, so they were potential locations. Majority of them were open space that was granted through um development and had deed restrictions on them that they only be used for open space conservation and natural resources and active and passive recreation. Um, and that pretty much wiped out like a whole bunch of them. Um, and so it narrowed it down then to just a few parcels um that remain that don't have any type of restriction on them that I could find at this point. Um, ideally, I don't know if they're, you know, they're not necessarily located in the areas where um you know, the dead zones are. One, um, the the one property that is on Penland Pike, it's actually directly across from Richard's Way. Um, that was purchased through the Groot subdivision in two thousand and eleven, but it's it's like heavily wooded. So like the the actual physical characteristics of the property would, you know, would be a deterrent because you would have to be like removing. Um, you'd have to get in there to be able to construct the tower. So um so that's, you know, that would be an issue. Um, and then, of course, location to um residential areas within the township as well. Um, they are permitted. Um, the towers and the um uh, the attachment zones, um, they are permitted on, um, for example, like the Spring House Innovation Park. They're permitted on there. Um, they would be permitted on Jansen's property, and then they would be permitted on the Beacon Property. next to Gwinnett Mercy. So while the township doesn't own those properties, they are also maybe an option that you know, Rise Up or whoever would maybe want to consider.
So I think the one that stood out for me, and this is, I guess, a conversation for us as a board to at least identify areas or parcels of these, of these few that have been identified on the map as possible viable properties for us to identify if we're comfortable with any of these specific identified addresses. And if so, ensuring that we communicate that with the wireless companies so that they can begin the process again more formally of reaching out to the cell phone carriers and saying these are properties that could be considered, don't have restrictions, don't have any kind of limitations. I think the goal, or the issue that I see is really just the reach of the tower, and if it's going to address the areas that we know at minimal lack coverage. The one that makes the most obvious sense to me is Worcester Avenue.
Yeah.
Which is near the Septa Tracks across from the Ingrisaw Field.
That's number twenty-nine.
Yes. I mean, there's some others that at minimum I would feel comfortable with, but I would want to know how how the board would feel and as many as we could at least identify or have a conversation about that we could move this forward and actually ensure that they have a commitment from our board that we are interested. I think we should do that as soon as possible. Again, we don't have to defend, we're not signing anything today. We're just merely saying that we're comfortable with you considering these locations moving forward so that we can see if there is a carrier who would be willing to bring cell phone service to these areas that have nothing.
I think Worcester.
The importance of coverage.
Absolutely.
At the same time, these are township-owned parks. With them, that being said, I would be really uncomfortable. Neighbors, I was saying. All we're doing is we're just stewards.
Yeah.
Township owns it. And from that perspective, this is a polarizing issue both ways. People who don't have cell phone coverage want it desperately. The people who don't want towers don't want them desperately. Or what have you. Before we bring in a third party saying, hey, I can put something here, or I can put something there. I wouldn't want them to get bombarded at a public meeting until we talk to the neighbors and said, hey, this is what we're thinking.
I think the concern is, or at least one of the concerns is, you know, we have individuals who have come forward, and I think you weren't at the meeting, but we had an individual with over a hundred signatures of neighbors that were indicating they desperately wanted a cell phone. It's unlikely until we say that there's a consideration for a cell phone tower coming near your home that somebody's going to come forward to tell us, hey, I've got great cell phone service. Just wanted to let you know. I don't need a tower. You know what I'm saying? It's the kind of issue where if you don't have the lack of the service, you're not going to come forward or even think that someone would need a cell phone tower in order to have access.
Going to come forward when they say there's going to be.
Yeah, but if, but we will never be able to get to the point where we can identify that there would even be a consideration for a carrier bringing one next to you until we identify parcels to give to a company to see if a carrier would be willing. Like, the way that the process works, unfortunately, inhibits us from being able to ensure that we have an accurate reflection of how people would feel about it if it was close to them. Because we could give them Worcester Avenue, we'll say. And they could say, no, that's not going to work for us.
Right.
And we could give them one where it's very close to people, and they could say, hey, that's the spot. But until we give them that and the carrier actually shows the interest, we couldn't tell anyone except for the people who are paying attention to our meetings.
Yes, I understand. My concern is, okay, you've identified Worcester Works. Okay, we're going to have the company come in, make a presentation, Worcester Works, we want Worcester. And at that public meeting, that's when the first time the public.
No, I think that there's steps before that. So the carrier is going to identify that this would be a place that they could. And at that point, they would come back to us and give us the opportunity to then talk to the public and say, this is something that the carrier could consider bringing and building a tower. We want to make you aware. We want to have conversations. And I think Rise Up talked about having public meetings, education, presenting the information, ensuring that they were aware of what it would look like, the range. I mean, that would be the point where we would know the range. You know what I'm saying? So we don't even, the assumption is that it could reach up to two miles, but is that going to get all the members to Gwinnett Hunt? Where, and Gwinnaire and the people at the carriages? We wouldn't know for certain.
So I think we need to answer that question before we identify.
Two miles is the, two miles is the rough range. But we couldn't get, we couldn't get the definitive answer until we know.
Well, that's when they, I think they have to look at the specific location.
That's why they have to look and tell us if it makes sense or not. We absolutely could. So that's what she was talking about when she said Jansen, Ship, and Beacon. There is a financial component. So if it is on township property, we get, we lease the portion of the property to them, and we do get compensated for that lease. We would be completely out of that, and I'm not saying that that's good or bad. I'm just thinking logistically where Jansen is, where Ship is. It is a bit away from Penland, from
I like Jansen.
Penland Pike and from
twelve oh one, some account like Beacon property. I think that would solve my problem.
It might solve my, I don't know. I don't know about Penland. No, I don't think it would solve like Penland would.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen. They have them where they look like telephone poles. They have them where they look like flagpoles. I don't know if you remember that presentation, but you can go back and it's reported. And there's the one that looks like a tree, but it looks like the saddest tree ever. I mean, I mean, these are, these are all just. Yeah. Like the white poles. They're like, they're, the one that I saw was completely white all the way up. And it was, it was wrapped. I think what that does though, and I rewatched the presentation, it limits the number of carriers that can be on the pole. So I think as opposed to four, you can now get two. Again, this, we can't get to the point of having all of that information until we identify parcels to be able to share, to say, these are ones we would consider.
Yeah.
And then with that consideration, they will give us more of the background information and I think just from constituent feedback, it goes all the way up to across the street from Gwinnett Mercy, all the way down, like coming towards Spring House, down Penland Pike, through Penland. I mean, then we're outside of our township. But the entirety of Penland Village has not had cell phone service over twenty years. Like, they haven't had cell phone service. The community spaces and they've, they've had to consistently rely on landlines because they don't have consistent cell phone service. I don't want to exaggerate it. I mean, you could have a phone call, but it will drop three to four times. And that's what the individual who came in at our last meeting and kind of shared that it's not that you can't make a phone call, can't keep a phone call, and there's no rhyme or reason. Yeah. So that was part of what they are willing to do. Just the, the Rise Up individuals are looking to be able to map as well. Again, they can't, you know, they can't really go forth and do all they need to do until we get to the point where we're showing the commitment or the level of engagement where we're willing to identify properties.
It means all of Penland Woods off the table, including the whole entrance.
Yeah, well, so that had a, that did have a deed restriction on it, the whole wooded area. And then it also has like a conservation easement over it as well. And then the drive, the whole driveway in, there, I guess we have some type of access easement with the water, with North Wales Water over that. But yeah, pretty, that's pretty much completely off limits.
So you would retain, I mean, this definitely would be different if, if Rise Up found a carrier or carriers who were interested. It isn't like an applicant coming in with you where you have to keep the process moving. You kind of have an obligation to give them their due process. This would be more, you know, like, okay, there's, there's somebody who's interested. You could completely control how that worked then, the timing of it, how quickly. It's also possible nobody to be interested. So, you know, you don't want to spend too much time and either get people's hopes up or get them very worried about something that may never even happen.
Are there locations that you identified that, I mean, they're not listed on the viable properties because that would require some sort of zoning change?
Well, no, they pretty, any, they pretty much all require some type of, you can, under the telecommunications section in the code book, you can have a cell phone tower located outside of the overlay district that's identified by a variance from the zoning hearing board.
Okay, so even, so even the viable properties will require some sort of zoning change. Okay.
Yeah.
What if that the antenna was a clip on building?
Can we put something on the building where what's the field?
Cutler?
Or you're talking about towers?
Yeah, you know that building there?
The community room?
Yeah, I mean, I know, we put a, I mean, I get you can't put a tower sort of standing alone, but what about on the roof of that?
It breaks it up into attachment zone and structure zone, so the same would apply.
I think my also rudimentary understanding of how cell phone towers work, that clip board for the building has to bounce from something. Yeah, so we don't have that. So, I, so first for me, the obvious one to me is Worcester along the, it's like near the Septa Tracks, but that portion of land that we own that crosses over Penland Pike that follows the Septa Pike tracks down. It's that, if you see it, it's number twenty-nine, but it's that whole way down.
But doesn't, doesn't it just make sense, given this discussion, doesn't it make sense just to say to Rise Up, these are our properties. Tell us where you think you can get a nibble for the carriers.
I would be comfortable with the possible viable. Yeah. I mean, so the,
That's going to solve the problem.
The possible viable properties.
I don't know if anyone could say they're going to solve the problem.
Like, you know, they, I would imagine they'd be able to compare these different sites and say which ones look better than the other. At least sometimes.
I don't think we're going to get any kind of insurance. They want to put a tower up. Alright, so they're.
No, they don't. Let's be clear. Rise Up is in the business of trying to partner with the carriers and municipalities, but carriers are not in the business of looking to put up cell phone towers. It costs too much money and it doesn't, not a good business model for them. However, you know, they do it because the need, yeah, the need. You guys knew it? Chad, you knew it? William Penn ended up that way?
Oh, the Vitetta House?
Oh, that's the, no, she's, she's talking about the one across the street. The two oh two right of way is actually going to be in the, the, I know, but I'm calling it two oh two. It's not. I'm talking about the, yeah.
Oh, Beetle, the Beetle property? Okay. Does it go back behind Gwinnett Hunt? That's our sewer easement.
Yeah, that's the sewer.
Yes. Yeah. But that would be right behind the carriages. So, yeah, that would be.
So I guess I don't want to prolong this unnecessarily. Is there any, is there any objection to putting forth the possible viable properties as a complete list to, to one of the organizations to be able to see if a carrier would be interested? This. Well, I mean, we can publicize it, but until a carrier says their, their interest, we won't know any, you know.
I don't want to, I don't want to make.
I don't want to necessarily make anyone nervous, and then they come back and say, no, thank you. But, I mean, yes, well, that's why we're talking about it at a public meeting.
Tessie, it's possible none of these properties are going to get a bite at all. I do think it makes sense to to get it out there first, and as I said, to see if there's one or more of these where you have any takers. And then if you do, absolutely, then that's what I'm saying. You have total control then before there's any, you know, decisions, any formal meetings, anything like this, where you could have neighborhood meetings, and you'd have a lot more information. This is viable. This is where coverage would improve, all those kinds of things that. Yeah.
Would you give the entire, the thirty parcel map?
Possible viable.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's, let me just count because they're not numbered.
I think there was eight.
Yeah, the eight properties. So is there any objection to giving that entire eight properties? Do we need to make a motion? Sir?
You know I object.
Well, say it then, sir. Say it.
Sir.
Sir. Supervisor Torsky. Now, Supervisor Torsky, please don't hold your tongue.
I've never been one.
Please, if you, if there is one.
I guess I, I, I don't, I don't have an objection to go and see if.
Okay. Yeah, that's all we're doing.
Yeah, no, I just think that the public needs an opportunity to comment on whether they.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. And just so I understand, the eight viable of the thirty some that we own, the other ones, it, we could, it could never work. Like, we can't make any sort of zoning change or pass any sort of amendment.
Deed restricted or what have you.
You know what I, you know what I mean?
Most of them, no. Yeah, because they're, they're, they have a deed. I mean, that's probably more a question for Neil because they have a deed restriction on them, but some of them were purchased with like county, like in, in part with county open fund, open space funds. And so if you even like use a little bit for like right of way improved, like improvements, you have to get, like pay them back. So, so, yeah, I don't think those ones are. Well, I think that kind of ties into what Mimi had mentioned about Act fifty and having to look at the whole ordinance that that we have on wireless communication and, you know, some zoning changes and, you know, maybe expanding that overlay, that type of thing would be considered to make sure we're in compliance with that as well.
So Jamie, where are they permitted now? Like, what would be some of the properties where?
They're really only permitted in where Ship, Jansen, and Beacon. I mean, they're the only ones that have, and then the overlay is like, or the overlay, it's like one little tiny section on two oh two. The overlay is really where they already are. So that gets really just, it's a long, like the three oh nine bypass. It's a long, there's a little section on two oh two and that's, there's one parcel that's like the, the water, it's the water company, so there's only like, I mean, it's so small on the zoning map, the overlay is really specific locations.
So just, just to clarify, do we need to authorize? Is this conversation sufficient enough that the board seems in unison? That we can move forward with identifying these identified properties to communicate to the companies so that they can get back to us? And then as a, you know, as, as township administration, you're going to pursue looking at the zoning so that we're ensuring that we're in compliance with Act Fifty-seven, is it Act Fifty-seven? Act Fifty of, of twenty twenty-one? And come back to us with recommendations? Thank you, guys, efficiently. Any additional, no additional questions? Seeing none, next up is the adoption of the twenty twenty-three final budget. We did advertise the budget. And at our November seventh meeting, there was one advertised change that was identified at our meeting, and that's really just correcting the budget of the EAC tree giveaway to the Stormwater Management Fund, thirty-one from ten thousand to fifteen thousand. And that was included in our manager's report. No comments from the public were received. No changes to our rate were proposed for any taxes in the budget. Are there any questions of the board? Seeing none, are there any questions from the public?
I don't have a question.
Please.
Yes.
I just want to thank Snap for putting the budget together, it was a huge task. So, thank you very much for all the effort.
I second that. I'll third that, is it?
Fourth.
No, I think the ease of reading and, and the, the way that it was presented for, for laymen to even understand what, what we were prioritizing and how we were moving forward as, as well as adapting capital projects was, was awesome. So I appreciate that tremendously. But then I'd like to make a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-three budget, is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries, thank you so much again. Next up is, is resolution. Next up is a resolution of the township of Lower Gwyneth, of, in the County of Montgomery, to adopt a fixing the tax rate for the year of two thousand and twenty-three. This is a requirement. And, and the resolution is included in your manager's report. This is basically us just identifying that we are going to meet that requirement. Are there any questions of the board? Seeing none, is, are there any questions from the public? I'd like to make a motion to accept the real estate tax resolution with no change into our millage. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Next up is the Spring House Phase Two roadway improvement project. Our, McMahon Associates gave a proposal for construction administration and inspection services for Phase Two of the Spring House roadway improvement project, and it was dated November tenth of two thousand and twenty-two. This recommendation requested for us to authorize advertisement of a bid for construction of the Phase Two of the Spring House roadway improvement. It kind of goes through the cost of Phase One as well as the cost of Phase Two. Chad is available to ask any, answer any questions? Are there any questions from the board?
So this is.
Well, the project, a large part of the project is being funded by grants. Those grants have to be utilized by a certain date. So, you know, to wait for the process to play out for your comprehensive plan to be updated, potentially revisit improvements after that would take you well beyond the expiration of those grants. I think it's also best to look at it from the perspective of, there's been a Phase One, there's been a Phase Two, and ultimately there's probably going to have to be subsequent phases to continue to address, you know, traffic at the intersection to make improvements as we go further along into the future and more development occurs in the township, so. I don't think this should be viewed as this is, this is the last time that the intersection will be looked at or addressed. It'll continually be, be done after your comprehensive plan, I think. That would be a very important step to determine what Phase Three is and what Phase Four may be down the road to continue to, to revisit the traffic issues at the intersection.
Didn't you do a lot of that, like, right?
We, we did, there, there, there has been lots of previous studies done for the intersection dating back twenty years. The, the project for Phase One and Phase Two is being funded in part by impact fees, which were put into place twenty years ago, and there were studies done at that time which projected out, you know, a certain number of years in terms of what the needs will be, but, and we'll continue that process moving forward, but, you know, there has been extensive studies up to this point to define what Phase One, Phase Two would be. And as I said, as we go, go into the future, the comprehensive plan update process, eventually we'll do a major update to the township's transportation impact fee and capital improvements plan, where we'll look at additional phases for additional improvements that can be done at the intersection.
I just wanted to, to point out just so everybody has a decent feel for what you're going to get from the comprehensive plan. It's a very high level plan. So it'll talk about transportation needs, but at a hundred thousand feet. And inters- you know, there should be study of the five-point intersection to see if congestion could be addressed. It's going to be the level of detail that would be at the comp plan. So two years from now, all it would be saying is what you already know now, that that's an intersection to be addressed. The transportation impact fee, that whole process would lead to an updated detailed plan, or at least would identify projects and it would be more detailed of, we want to, you know, add these turning lanes and through lanes, and still wouldn't be engineered, but it'd be much more detailed. So that you, you're talking four or five years out, best case scenario, before you'd get to not even as far along as you are now with these projects, just so, it's a very lengthy process. So essentially, you're kind of at the end of your last planning cycle doing implementation for that, and, and, and I know you understand that. You have, you are very successful with the grants, you have large multimodal two grants here that you definitely want to, to put to good use. But it's, you're not going to come out of the comp plan saying add a through lane anywhere or, or, you know, having gone to that level of detail, there won't be a recommendation to do that in the comp plan.
Any additional questions from the board? So Phase One cost us one point five million dollars funded by an over million, my seven thousand multimodal grant, as Mimi kind of alluded to. Phase Two is going to consist of widening Norristown Road to add a through travel lane to Summit Town Pike and widening Summit Town Pike to accommodate the new through lane from Norristown Road. And a right lane, right turn lane on Bethon Pike and a related traffic signal driveway and sidewalk modifications. It's estimated to cost three million dollars, it's going to be funded by two multimodal grants from PennDOT totaling one point nine sixty, one, one point nine million dollars and some change. And transportation impact fees paid by Lower Gwyneth Township developers. So what McMahon is requesting today is us to approve the proposal of construction administration inspection services for Phase Two of the Spring House roadway improvement project. And us to also authorize advertisement of bid for the construction of Phase Two of the Spring House roadway improvement project. Again, are there any questions from the board? Or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? With that, I would like to make, can I do it as one motion? I have to do it as two motions. A motion to approve the McMahon proposal for construction administration inspection services for Phase Two. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries. And then next up, an authorization to advertise the bid for construction of Phase Two of the Spring House roadway improvement project, is there a second? All those in favor? Thank you so much, Chad. Next up is a resolution for us to submit a PA small water and sewer grant application, was included in our manager's report. This is kind of. I'm sorry, my computer's going. So the resolution is they authorize the submission of the grant application for the PA DCED small water and sewer program, and, and it, I can read you all the resolves or you can read them to yourself. But it's designating us to make an application in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars for the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used towards our sewer upgrade and an extension project. Our staff is putting together and working on the, the language and the actual application. This is us authorizing them to complete and submit on our behalf. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, where, what is the extension project, is that? Is that what we were talking about a while back with?
The extension project is to add sewer to Ingersoll.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the submission or the, authorize our staff to submit grant application of our DCED's Economic Small Water and Sewer Program on our behalf, is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up is Act Fifty-seven of two thousand and two amends the local tax code to allow taxpayers who failed to receive a tax notice during the first year of occupancy to apply for and receive a waiver and penalties. And I think this addresses individuals who may have moved or, or for whatever reason, for some reason have not received identification of, of, of a, that they owe taxes and allows them to get that waiver and to avoid those penalties. It took effect in October and our tax collector is aware and she revised the resolution and she had no comments. So it's us to adopt that, that waiver of the penalty, is there any questions from, or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I would like to make a motion for us to adopt Act Fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-two to amend the local tax law as it relates to Lower Gwyneth. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up is the Wastaken Clean Watershed Partnership with the IGA and the extension. Essentially, the intermunicipal collaboration resolution has not come to an end and, and they would like to extend our participation in that IGA for the development of water quality within the Wastaken Creek Watershed. This is a resolution to authorize an extension of the interg- intergovernmental agreement upon the adoption of the plan or within ninety, within expiration of ninety days of the adoption of the plan. Or until December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three. The resolution was included in our manager's report, are there any questions from the board? Any comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, I would like to make a motion for us to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-two thirty-three as it relates to our intermunicipal collaboration resolution. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Next up is a, is a resolution for us to change the signers for the retirement accounts, the former township manager and finance director were the signers of this account, this is to authorize our assistant township manager Jamie Warman and Mary Trusino as signers for the pension accounts with our, with our banks and to authorize Munich Leeson to certify this approval. Are there any questions or comments from the board? No? Questions, comments from the public? I would like to make a motion for us or recommend a res- do we have to recommend a resolution or just make a motion? Is there any? Just authorizing you, okay. Okay, so this is to authorize me and Leeson to certify the approval of, of the two additional signers to our, our pension accounts. Is, is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Included in our manager's report was the minutes from our Tuesday, November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. This is for supervisor Huntsinger and supervisor Martin, have you had an opportunity to review?
Yep.
Are there any connections or concerns with the minutes? I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the November twenty-second meeting, is there a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you. Um, committee reports.
I think Parks and Rec didn't meet the EAC, didn't meet the Human Relations Commission at their first meeting. They selected a chairperson and secretary and identified the years for their terms of service. And then discussed reaching out to other local HRCs to better understand kind of how they got established and what training programs they participated in. Crafting materials to hand out to businesses. And I think they talked about putting together something for the website.
And identifying the email address for individuals to be able to contact. I guess my question, and this is to, they have maybe even our solicitor. They made a recommendation to the board for the identification of a person and, and a secretary, should we wait to our reorganization since it's the next meeting? That's what I assumed. I just wanted to make sure if that made sense to everyone.
And I think they, um, identified their.
They identified the terms.
The terms and their meeting, um, their meeting dates.
Correct. So I believe it's going to be the third Thursday of every month at seven.
I think it's the first Thursday.
Is it the first Thursday?
Yes, the first Thursday of every month.
At seven.
Well, the chair.
Yep, at seven.
So that will be included at our organizational meeting, but that it will be the first Thursday of every month at seven. Um, and we'll include the information as to the participants, their terms, and make that recommendation to the board so that they can approve. Uh, I don't think that there has been another meeting outside of the Historic Committee will be meeting this Thursday. Is there any additional meetings that have taken place? Very nice. Um, Dan, any updates, comments? Projects, information?
The chief was going to have an update. The only part of it that I know is, is, um, you know, what you've already said, which is that Kaya Nix is, uh, graduating from the police academy tomorrow night.
Yes, very exciting time. One of our recent hires, um, as a, um, police, um, a, a new police officer to our township, Kaya Nix. He will be graduating tomorrow from Montgomery County Community Colleges program at seven PM. Everyone's welcome to a come. And, and extend it to, to the board as well, to support him and to show support of the accomplishment of completing his academy. That is tomorrow at seven PM. Anyone else? Any other staff? Any staff? No? Uh, supervisor comments? Uh, Tessie?
I mean, it'll be before us, I guess, to vote on. I think the recommendation would be from January to March, if we could meet on Mondays.
Or Wednesdays.
But I think Wednesday's conflict with, uh, professional staff. That's my understanding. Uh, the reason that it, is the same reason that it was last year is that, uh, we have children in, well, I think it's just me now. I have a, a senior in high school, and the way that the basketball schedule works is that they play on Tuesdays and Fridays. Uh, it's my last child. I would like to be able to see him play basketball. Is there, you, you're, you're good? Okay. Kathleen?
Uh, yeah, just want to wish my colleagues and staff and everyone else happy holidays. See you in, um, how many weeks? Year four?
Wow.
So enjoy your time, mom. Thanks for a good year.
Thank you.
Mimi? Um, yep, happy holidays, everybody, and, um, just wanted to thank everybody for, uh, your support and your guidance, um, and working together this year. It's my first year as a supervisor and having a really good time.
Mike?
I want to share, uh, I, I guess I kind of echo everyone else's comments. Want to wish everyone a happy holidays and enjoy the break and enjoy the time. You and the new year. With that, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Two, that's a wrap.